I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from the April 5th meeting.
Any discussion on those meeting minutes? Are you not all in favor? Am I any opposed? Right, motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on April 12th.
Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? Am I any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so not that I'm counting down or anything, but we're at thirty-two, eight weeks to go. The junior class fundraiser at Applebee's last Tuesday, which we didn't know about until the Tuesday before, so I couldn't mention it at our last, last meeting, was the most successful carryout for a cause event that the Geneseo Applebee's has had. Got like three hundred-ish, sorry? The seniors have a fundraiser this Saturday at the tavern. If you have any questions, direct them to them. Oh, not to them, apparently, okay. The winter sports awards ceremony, it was all virtual, was sent out via email this afternoon. Fall two sports, regular seasons are coming to a close with football on Wednesday and volleyball tomorrow and Thursday, and the sectionals for both sports are still to be announced. Everything's in limbo because they're closed this year, so. And then spring sports for GB and varsity started today. Many teams were missing, like half a team, because fall sports are still happening. But overall, the weather seemed to cooperate today. Don't know about later this week. It was good today, so if you have any questions, nothing's really happening.
Very good. They're trying to fit everything in.
Thank you.
I'm doing great.
As Regina said, modified fall two sports has ended or is coming to an end, and modified spring sports are starting next week. And build out a season, because I never got one last year. Our music department is heading towards our spring concerts, and our show part has started new songs, and I can tell that we are really excited. Thank you Regina for our choreography. New York State tests for English start this, this, and continue next week Monday. NJHS inductions last Wednesday were a success. Our NJHS inducted twenty-five new members, including myself, live, and it was also streamed for others to see. I'm honored to be such a part of an amazing group of students. Congrats everyone else, inducted. The seventh grade class of 2026 is doing a pizza sale fundraiser. If you want to support, you can call Pizza Paul's and purchase gift certificates for one large tuffin pizza, large one tuffin pizza for twenty dollars, which is only fifty cents more than the original price. You can see a seventh grader for more information if wanted. Any questions?
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you, and congratulations on your induction.
Thank you.
Well-observed, well-earned, well-worked, hard work. Don't, you know, don't run. Bye ladies. Okay. I have a feeling we have a presentation.
This is a big deal.
All right, so obviously so many things are still up in the air right now, but we are trying to move forward, trying to plan a senior trip for our four seniors to have anything, had anything but a normal senior year, to try and keep it within New York, so we have the same regulations. We are looking at Lake George, that has expressed that the Adirondacks is their first choice within New York they would like to go to. So this is the preliminary itinerary that our travel agent has sent over to us. The trip is on the calendar from June 8th to June 10th. So as you can see, they got a whole bunch of things going on there, including major water parks, some hiking, ropes courses, lots of venturing to the Adirondacks. These are all the current estimate costs, and it's all based on whether or not students will fit in a quad or in a double. We actually changed the forty there, and also we have a price for twenty students in a quad. I can't remember the exact number right now. I think it's right around thirty students in a double, right around that price point. So these are all estimates based on how many students can be in a hotel room and how many students sign up. Right now, we're still waiting to hear about from the health department of how many students we can put in a hotel room together. We, you know, last week and kind of processed that. These are all the things that we included in that. And we do have a couple backup plans, too. We have Plan B, which was that ride to High Ranch. They are now open. That point B, and then Plan C is a few day trips during that time. So kids, we have to back it up.
Day trips would need to be something over, is that what?
No, no, they would just be around here, and those three days, we would plan three separate things, so like, we looked at, like a different ropes course around here, we looked at ledgeboard, altitude, possibly air length or sea breeze, things like that, just to give them some things to do during those three days, that we celebrate together, reaching the end of their senior year.
Do you have any sense of how many seniors want to go?
We don't yet. We were waiting until we presented to you all.
I was just wondering, because, you know, because of the cost and stuff, I was curious with the, obviously, the more you, and this is a small class.
Yes.
Very small class.
Very small class.
So I was just curious if you had some general idea, but.
Well, we have four.
How many do you have?
Fifty.
Did you know, what are the limitations for the motor coach? Would you give her back yet? Like, how many can fit on one, or is the class for two?
So we do have the class for two, they're not up there. She just sent it to me today, so we have made this presentation last week. So right now, that cost is for one motor coach, which I think seats, one, with one student per seat, twenty-eight. But if it's two per seat, then that's doubles.
But that would change that cost. Do you have to put another bus in there?
Yes, yes, like, she did. I mean, those new prices, I can send them over to you guys. She just sent it to me today, so we just made this.
So thirty in a quad with two motor coaches, I believe it was seventy, seventy-nine. Thirty in a quad, two motor coaches, okay. So I believe the motor coaches have to follow the same restrictions that we have with school buses, which they still talk about reduced capacity. They really haven't talked about a number, so there might be some wiggle around it as well. And Seabreeze has agreed to open up just for seniors on certain days, as it gets warmer. So if this does not work out, or we want to do something additional, that would be an option as well.
I missed the dates, June 8th to 10th?
June 8th to the 10th, yeah.
Thanks.
I, I think it's great you're trying to do something.
Yeah, me too.
After last year, having nothing for the, you know, because of where, where we were at, and this year, even still having it just be so not normal. I mean, you know, this is a good thing, and I, I mean, I hope that you can, my fingers will be crossed with my eyes, legs, and everything else, that you can get it down as low as you can, so everyone can feel that they can afford it, and obviously, there's probably ways to do some fundraising or whatever, if there are kids that need some help on that. But I think that's a wonderful itinerary that you have there, and I like backup plans as well, whatever, if, you know, if you had to. I hope you don't, but I don't have a real concern if we're following what the guidelines in New York State Department of Health say, then why not? And the parents and kids are comfortable, that's what matters, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sure.
They're ready for anything at this point.
Right, right.
Yep, got it. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, if it works out. So it isn't overnight certainly that needs board. I think it does need board approval, because it's overnight, tentatively, so do you want to call the question?
Should we? Can we just do it out of order? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the senior trip.
Second. Second.
Anybody who have any more questions or concerns about this trip before we vote on it?
The motion is following, like, the guidelines?
Well, I think that's, I think they've mentioned that, yeah, I, I mean, the trip needs to follow.
As presented.
As presented, there you go. Trip must be as presented, or, or option B and C, just come back with that if it's an overnight. So if you're, if it's not this, but it's a different overnight, we'll have to re-vote on that overnight. But if it's, if it's your day trips, if you end up at stage C or Plan C, you're good to go. All right, all in favor? Am I any opposed? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
All the kids to have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yep. Make the presentations, sir, I'll just go in order. So tonight, I will be presenting the proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Before we get started, I just want to thank so many people that have put this budget together. First and foremost, the finance committee has met on New Year's Mondays prior to the board meeting, put in lots of work and recommendations in regards to the budget. But I also want to recognize the administrative team and team leaders. This year, we utilized a different process. We really started out with a zero-based budget. That was a very different process than what we have done in the past, and it was a lot of work. And so certainly, the administrative team and the team leaders, they put a lot of effort into really prioritizing what they felt was important, to continue to have Geneseo be very successful, so want to thank them, because it was, it was something that was new. And in a, in a year that's not typical, and there's already additional responsibilities, everyone stepped up and helped out, so I just wanted to thank everyone. And of course, Mr. Forrester, for all the budget presentations prior to this, and helping provide the information as we move forward. So what does the twenty-one, twenty-two budget include? So we are adding the science position back into the budget that we had not replaced last year. When Mr. Salatell did the presentation last time on the schedule, you heard how not replacing that position can really impact our singletons, as well as our offerings for advanced classes. So we are replacing that position. Another important piece is we are increasing our middle school, high school, career technological position from point five, so Mr. Ellis's position that he retired from, it'd be an increase of one point oh. This budget does include our school resource officer. All the retirements this year are being replaced. And we are assuming that next year, we will be operating under some COVID-19 restrictions as we open school. And I will talk in my, in my next presentation about the new guidance and what that means for us. But if we need to do double bus runs, like we had in the past, to get our students here, there is funding in this budget to support that. So we'll start with the general support. So in the general support, and that is really tiny, and I apologize for that, is the Board of Education. And the Board of Education, our expenses related to state and local memberships for local and state conferences, our district position, and expenses for the annual budget and election vote. And I will have this PowerPoint on the budget website, so if you want to look at this more closely, you apologize for the, the print being so small. Also included in general support is my office, so superintendent salary, secretary of superintendent salary, materials and supplies, and also any professional development and conferences and memberships that I look at. Finance includes the business office, and so certainly, Mr. Forrester, Ms. Werner, and Hope are in that office, so our payroll clerk, treasurer, house receivable. And really, this is all the operations of the business office, as well as internal and external audit functions. On the bottom is public information, and this is our district communications program. So this is our BOCES employee, Leah Shepherd, who helps with providing our linkages. She helps create our district calendar and our required annual notifications. Also in the general support are human resources and legal services. So you, as the last meeting, someone did ask about the significant increase in our legal fees. And really, when you look at the number of safety plans that we need to have reviewed for COVID-19, that increased the amount that we utilized our legal services, as well as we've utilized them this year for labor contract administration, negotiations, effective targeting, the building project added extra expenditures to our budget. Another area in general support is our operations and maintenance. And so this includes all of the costs that it takes to run our building, our buildings and grounds. It includes the salary for our director of facilities, and you're in the process of replacing our building custodians and cleaners. It also is inclusive of utilities, water, sewer, telephone, and refuge removal, and safety inspection services, and our fire alarm contract, and then materials and supplies, which also include taking care of athletic fields and our pool. General printing and mailing, so this is any in-house printing, postage, and shipping, and we do utilize the BOCES print shop for that service. Also data processing, and data processing was also an area that had an increase. And this was really due to the one-to-one implementation of the devices that we were really forced to move towards as we had to open in the hybrid model and had our students in that remote learning environment. So we did see an increase there. So this includes our network, our high-speed single log and access, any video conferencing and video, digital video distribution, and software and hardware purchases. And then last in general support are our special items, and these are items not allocated elsewhere, so like insurance premiums, our BOCES capital rep, and administrative costs, tax payment for district buildings, and payment for successful property assessment challenges. The next part of our budget is the largest part of our budget, and that's the instruction component of our budget. And the first area that we're going to talk about is curriculum and staff development. And certainly, we believe in the value of the curriculum development. So in this area, we do have the Director of People Personnel salary, as well as her clerical support. She doesn't have full-time clerical support. She does share someone between the business office, and she's also helped out in the special education office and placed that position. But also just any costs related to our curriculum work, professional development, and certain opportunities provided to BOCES for both instructional and support personnel. Supervision of regular school, this is inclusive of our building principals, their secretaries, and the technology coordinator. Teaching of regular school, this includes salaries of our general teachers, our teaching assistants, teacher aides, substitute support staff, and instructional specialists. It also includes materials and supplies, textbook and equipment, equipment associated with the operation of the instructional program, textbooks for private proprio tools, and our foster care tuition. We also have in the instruction area, student services, so these are our special education programs. So this is programs for students with disabilities, and inclusive of the GB BOCES program. So salaries in here are special education teachers, our related service providers, and our mental health staff, educational aides, and clerical staff. It also includes instructional materials and supplies, summer school, speech therapists, PT, PT, and other required teacher aid. The next area is the occupational and career education. These are our career and technical services that we utilize through GB BOCES at the base center. And it also is inclusive of increasing, again, our technology positions from a one point five to two point oh in this budget. Teaching and supervision of special schools, so this is really our secondary summer school that we utilize through BOCES. School library and audiovisual services, so we utilize BOCES to help with automation of anything in the library, as well as technical assistance, repairs, and parts for the maintenance of audiovisual equipment, and support for online services. The computer-assisted instruction, these are costs related to the purchase of computer software, supplies, and materials, and maintenance of all hardware and software. The next area is our guidance services, and this is inclusive of our three school counselors and their clerical support. Inclusive in this line is also salaries for summer council work and summer clerical support. Other pupil services, interrelated attendance office staff, special, special education and non-special education pupil service function, health supplies and equipment, and the district's legal obligation to provide health services for students who are attending schools outside of the district. And one of the things that we felt was very important this year was our continuation of our co-curricular activities, interscholastic athletics. And so co-curricular is our extracurricular activities, interscholastic athletes. This really talks about our, our program for high school and seventh and eighth grade students, as well as strength and paid coaching staff, and costs related to official schools, equipment costs, simply supplies and materials, and also our uniform replacement line. Next is our transportation, and we do have our own fleet and our own drivers, very proud of that. And so in this area of the budget, it is inclusive of all our transportation costs. So transportation of all our paid student who reside in our district, as well as transportation to non-public schools within the required boundaries, purchase of buses, salaries of drivers, operations, staff, and maintenance, and then our operating expenditures, so tires, fuel, parts, registration, and expense costs. Employee benefits, this part of the budget, we don't have control over these costs as they increase. So primarily, the big ones that are in here are ERS, or employer retirement system. And this year, our contribution rate is sixteen point four percent, excuse me, sixteen point two percent. Our TRS, this is for our certified staff, was nine point eight percent. Social Security, we do pay seven point six five percent on wages. The unemployment insurance, we are keeping at the same rate as ten thousand as we did last year. We also include in this area medical insurance, which had an increase of ten percent, and then other benefits. These areas include payments and coverage for our workers' compensation program. Debt service, when you think of debt service, it really is very similar to a mortgage payment that you would have on your house. So when we look at this area, it includes not only any of the debt and interest payments that we're making on prior projects, but it also includes an annual capital outlay project of a hundred thousand dollars. And when you look at this amount, when you can actually see it in a size that's readable, you will see that the twenty-one, twenty-two school year has a significant decrease. And again, this is because of long-term debt retiring. So where is our estimated revenues and planned expenditures? Where do we get those from? So when we look at our revenues, we get them from our property tax levy. And so for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, our property tax levy is eleven million, six hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Our state aid is eight million dollars, seventy-six and ninety-three. Our miscellaneous, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and thirty. And we continue to use appropriated fund balance and appropriated reserve funds to offset the tax levy. And so for fund balance, we are using two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one, appropriated reserve funds, four hundred and forty-four, eighteen dollars. And, you know, it's just important to, to realize that we do use both reserves and fund balance to offset our budget costs. So our planned expenditures, when you look at our debt support, again, that's two million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty. Instruction is eleven million, three hundred and eighty-three, nine hundred and thirteen. Transportation, one million, eighty-four, nine five three. Our employee benefits, four million, eight hundred and sixty-six, fifty-one dollars. And our long-term debt, again, this is significantly lower than last year, one million, two hundred and eighty-seven, seven ninety-four. So an overall budget change of thirty-seven thousand, three oh seven, so decreasing by thirty-seven thousand due to that retiring debt. We also have to talk about our budget presented in the three components. And really, we look at program, capital, and administrative. So there's, there's no new information in this slide. It's just put into that, the three-part budget that we need to present. So our budget at a glance, our overall budget is twenty-one million, four hundred and fifty-six, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Again, it's a decrease of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. We do have a proposed tax levy increase of one percent. The proposed tax rate increase is three cents. If you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home value, the proposed tax increase is five dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is above the tax cap. If you remember, we did have a negative tax cap. And this is due to two major focuses, that was that long-term debt that was retired, that I talked about earlier, as well as an increase in the pilot payment from American Rockcell. And our tax rate remains low at sixteen dollars and thirty-one cents per one thousand. And just as a reminder, this budget does include adding a science position, increasing that middle school, high school CTE position from point five to one oh, including our school resource officer. We are replacing all our retiring positions, and again, that double bus run if needed. And I apologize for the size that, like I said, it will be on the website, so that if anyone wants to read me those numbers closer, that's question. But any questions in regards to the presentation?
Cindy, can you go back to the percentage of payroll for TRS and ERS? I might have wrote it down wrong.
Yep, so TRS was sixteen point two percent.
Okay.
And TRS was nine point eight.
ERS is nine point eight.
ERS was sixteen point two.
Okay.
Your count was sixteen point two. TRS.
Okay.
Anybody else? I'd like to reiterate thanks to the finance committee and everybody who sat in those meetings with Ken, Cindy, and all of the admin, and team leaders, and everybody else who had to pull together lots of information this year, working off the zero-based plan versus the sort of rollover that we've done in the past. I know that was a lot of extra work in the year that already had a lot of work. So thank you to everybody who worked on this to do the best we could with what we had, and work with all the crazy changes we were told every seemingly five minutes, so. All right. Great. There is the other update. So many of you did hear that on April ninth, we did receive updated guidance from the Department of Health. They did reduce the social distancing from six feet to three feet, and we were very excited about this, and we were hoping that it would really allow us to bring back more of our students. Unfortunately, they, they tied in other restrictions that is going to make it very difficult for our nineteen eleven students to return this year. So it depends on the transmission rate, and you have a chart later on that will show what the CDC is determining to be a high, low, moderate, high, and substantial transfer, transmission rate. They're saying they're no longer using barriers for lunches, that we have to be six feet apart when students are unmasked. The guidance was unclear about changes on transportation. It still talks about that reduced capacity, but then, in the next sentence, it gave an example of appropriate social distancing would be a student in every other seat or skipping rows. So in one hand, they're saying, go ahead with the reduced capacity, but then the example they're giving us would really restrict us in how we would bring back our students. One very good thing was the distance was reduced for performing arts, so they now can be socially distanced at six feet when playing with instruments and singing. And then again, the students must be six feet when eating, and students are in cohorts. So Kelly and I have been discussing, what does that mean for our elementary students? There's no timeline when we need to make these changes, so we have already started to have conversations about what that means for Geneseo, and how do we have our elementary get six feet apart when they are eating lunch. So again, the physical barriers, so when they say that they're no longer recommending the preferred method, is now enhanced ventilation and air filtration to dilute and remove SARS-CoV-2 particles from the air. Masks must be worn at all times, and masks should have at least two layers. They're getting much more specific about facial coverings and what consists of a mask. When we look at that transmission rate again, so the low transmission rate is the blue, and that would be nine cases per one hundred thousand or less than five percent, moderate transmission is yellow, and then substantial in orange. So let me say, Kelly and I continues to be a great partner and very helpful as we move through opening and staying open with COVID-19, because the CDC transmission rates has us fluctuating between orange and yellow up to red. And when you look at our local Livingston County data, they are removing any congregate data, so they are removing anyone who would be in a nursing home, so if there was a cluster in a nursing home, if there was a cluster in a jail. They are removing that, those data points, so that we could really have a true transmission rate of what would impact school. So that we could really have a true transmission rate of what would impact school. So that does keep us in the moderate transmission, so we can continue to offer our in-person learning throughout K P H schools. So schools can reduce social distancing to three feet. If considered low transmission, substantial risk of transmission for elementary, middle and high schools can maintain physical distancing at at least three feet. And they say cohorting is recommended. They're really not specific with what that cohorting is meaning. And so in the elementary, we're really looking at our cohorts are those classrooms. So a classroom is a cohort, they're separate all day, and that is how we're considering that in the elementary. In counties with high-risk transmission, again, cohorting is recommended. An elementary can be at least three feet from the students. But in the middle high school, they have to go back to the six feet. And they have to be in cohorts. And this is where it gets very difficult to bring back our students. And the fact that we can no longer use barriers for lunch. So as we were planning to move forward with bringing back our nine through eleven students, we had purchased more barrier material and polycarbonate, and we were in the process of cutting barriers to go on our tables. And they said that that was not an acceptable way to mitigate COVID nineteen. Even though we've proven since September that it is safe and we've been able to have our kids in person. So we're trying to work through the guidance with Livingston County Department of Health. And as I said, they've been a great partner in helping us stay open. And with the unfortunate news that you have heard about the situation in Hilton School. In August of two thousand and nineteen, Aaron's Law was signed into legislation. And what Aaron's Law is, is it requires a school district to teach children sexual abuse and exploitation prevention classes, and again, it's for students in grades K to eight. So just to bring you up to speed what we've done here at Geneseo. Both Mrs. Atora and Mr. Really have talked multiple times about the second step program, which we utilize K eight. That does have a child protection unit that addresses some of this, and we are reviewing that and aligning that with our curriculum. Our school counselors and our health teacher, Mrs. McIntyre, has attended the NICE training that was offered in April. Our health teacher also completed a three-hour training session, Health Smart. And this summer, we do have summer work plan for our school counselors and our health teacher to really align a K twelve alignment of that curriculum. Where we are here at Geneseo. And end of the year schedule. So we are observing June eighth, and that is observed on June eighteenth this year. You will make, you will vote on that recommendation later on. Students in grades K through seven will have full days through June twenty-second and half-days on June twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And our last day for staff will be June twenty-fifth. Any questions?
What's the next steps for meeting with the Department of Health?
Well, we meet with them on a weekly basis. And so they're in a, in a, in a difficult spot. Because they have to make sure that they comply with the New York State guidelines, but they're also trying to work with us and, and keep our students in person as much as possible.
What science is there behind the not using barriers?
Mike, that's a question for some people in the New York State Health Department that I, I can't answer.
Is there going to be on your, your agenda when you talk to them?
Well, we talk with Livingston County, so New York State Department of Health is the one that's making these decisions. Livingston County also agrees that what we've been doing has been safe and working. Unfortunately, they can't go outside of what the new written recommendations are.
What'll happen with the items that were purchased for the new the barriers?
We feel that the barriers do work and that they have been safe. So we are continuing, the, the material that we have purchased right now, we are utilizing.
And that'll fall under CARES Act funds?
We can utilize CARES Act money, yes, to pay for that.
It's not that we can't use them, they're just not recommending them and they're not basing their decisions on them. So we can use them, but.
I was just seeing if we.
We just can't break the rules that they give us.
Right, it does, that the use of the barriers doesn't allow us to reduce the social distancing, there has to be other factors in place.
Livingston County Department of Health, they're using Livingston County numbers? Are they using the Finger Lakes region, what are they, what numbers?
No, they, Livingston County, not Finger Lakes, Livingston County.
And at the moment, they're stating we are.
Livingston County is, the CDC's numbers are different.
No, I'm saying, what are they saying right now?
Livingston County is yellow. But it's also, it's also a good reminder, though, you know, that the weather is getting nicer. Many people are vaccinated. There does seem to be this relaxation of if we're at the end, we can start letting our guard down. And really, we need to, to not have that, we need to stay vigilant, we need to continue to wear our masks. We need to make sure that we have good hand hygiene and that we're cleaning and disinfecting like we were at the beginning of the school year.
You said they don't count clusters like the jail and nursing homes, what about the college?
Correct, they're taken out of that data as well.
If we can eat outside again, with the weather gets warm, I mean, granted, that gives us very little time at the end of the year, but is that an option, possibility, if we're able to throw up tents and put them back outside for lunches and?
Yeah.
Does that meet our possibility of getting those kids back, at least for some? No, it would be like almost nothing, but it's, I don't know, able to come back to be with their class for a couple weeks.
Yep, a month. Yeah, absolutely, we can look at as the weather gets nicer.
I know this Wednesday looks bad, but next Wednesday looks nice.
What, what does make it a little bit more challenging this time is that when we had tents up, we weren't utilizing as much of the outside space for our athletics and classes, but that doesn't mean that we won't look at that as an option, we certainly will.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? I know we're all disappointed. We all would like to move these kids back to some more normalcy, especially with nine through eleven kids that have been hanging out waiting. It's not our fault, but we're sorry. We were, we were ready to proceed and move ahead and the five-thirty email on that Friday kind of blew us out of the water. It was very disappointing, very disappointing, to say the least, and we'll leave it there. Um, okay, that brings us to community relations, Josh.
The only person to sign in is David Levy, David, if you're on, I'll unmute your mic.
Thank you. Again, thanks for the presentation this evening about the, the budget. Like to be informed as a member of the community. I do have some questions about what was presented. Again, I know that a lot of these issues are settled in more or less confidential negotiations, other sorts of discussions. And so I am not anticipating that there'll be full responses to everything I'm asking about. But I can feel some obligation to ask nonetheless. Superintendent addressed yet again, responded again to a question I asked a couple of weeks ago about the eighty-three percent increase in the budget for the legal fees. The rationale that was given this evening referred to expenses that were incurred this current year as a result of responses to the COVID crisis largely. I, I hesitate to, to, to think that we're going to face that that, that sort of as an ongoing practice of having to run lots of modified safety plans by, by legal counsel as rationale for such an increase in the, in the legal budget. So I guess I'd like to understand better why the, the thought in the budget is that those costs will become essentially structural at this point. I noticed also the budget allocation for athletics is being increased by thirty thousand dollars, about eight and a half percent. Again, I, I'm curious to know what the rationale is for that kind of increase to the athletics program. Over the last six years, the athletics program budget has increased pretty significantly. I believe it was held essentially flat for this current year. But the, each of the five previous years, there were pretty substantial increases to the athletics budget. And to see it increasing again, just something I'm curious about. All, as you might anticipate, in the context of, again, a, a response I received a couple of weeks ago from the superintendent, that the reduced support for the strings program will be maintained for the coming year. In other words, ten thousand dollars for one part-time elementary instructor for strings with additional coverage for middle school, high school folded into the portfolio of the middle school, high school band instructor. We know that the level of participation in the strings program is down pretty considerably. Student participation is low. But it's also the case that the value the students are receiving through the program has been radically reduced. There's not opportunity for ensemble rehearsal. And many students receive at most one lesson every two weeks. And in some months, at the elementary level at least, there are students who receive one lesson per month. It's rather unfortunate that a remarkable program like our strings program has fallen into that state. And I would like to appreciate and understand better why the decision is to maintain that reduced support when other things are seeing increases. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I think I got all that, the volume was very low. I think you got most of that down, right? Okay. We'll, we'll take all of that under advisement and share what we can with all of you. Is that it? Is that the last only person? There's nothing new for our at finance, Mike, or?
No, nothing new.
Okay.
We go back to once a, once a month.
Right, okay, great. Um, community engagement strategies, again, we haven't met there, but we're considering possibly having a meeting for some end-of-year things, so we'll talk more about that.
Absolutely.
Uh, and then G C F, they continue again to meet kind of offline. In fact, a request came through today in regards to seeking funds to help support the prom. So that is being looked at by G C E F in terms of helping out with prom costs for juniors and seniors, yeah? Or just seniors, it's a junior, senior, yeah, junior, senior prom, right. So they are discussing that pretty much right now as we speak, there are emails flying around about that. So hopefully there will be a decision for that request soon. And tonight, David, we had policy committee.
We did, we met, the policy committee met and started to look at our policy book, which Mrs. Mellonbacher will show us, it's there's a lot of stuff in there.
It's very heavy.
There's, uh, we've learned there's a certain percentage of regs that are required, or policies that are required. And others that are not. And so the task for the remaining of this year and next year will be to fine-tune that book. We've, we've got some help from Gary Bosie's one. And we will, we'll get it done. At, at this point, we reviewed three proposed policies. The first, the, the Tyson with Aaron's Law, dealing with sexual harassment of students, we've already got something along those lines, but the, the new required policy is, is more detailed. And it, it's a better, it's a better policy. The other thing we're looking to propose next time is an item related to putting propositions for vote at the annual meeting, we've got some questions about that before it goes out. And third is displaying the flag, it's a, it's another required policy in what places the flag should be displayed and who has the authority to, to raise and lower the flag and.
We have a couple of questions on that.
We have some questions on that one too, so.
And there's some wording in there that's a little strange and drawn with
Yeah.
possibly the way it's read, giving Cindy some ability to lower the flag, which in the past, we haven't thought was.
And there's some language in there that gives the board authority to do some things with the flag, so we want to get that answered. And if we get the questions answered, we'll put it out for a first read next time. And I guess that's about it?
That's about it, and we're gonna be going through this book slowly, but you're supposedly what, there's only forty? There's like forty-eight policies that we have to have, and yet this is how big our policy manual is. So hopefully in a couple of years, this will be smaller, more like a small book instead of a home. Okay. Thank you, David. Personnel?
Personnel? I'd like to make a motion, we approve items eight point zero-two through eight point zero-seven, second.
Any discussion on any of those items?
Just want to wish our retirees Doug Phillips and Michelle Hodgman well. They have certainly served Geneseo in many capacities and have really made a difference in many children's lives, we wish them well in retirement. And then also just want to congratulate Charlie and his wife about the expected arrival of their second child, so just wish them well.
Yes, thank you to all, and enjoy retirement, well earned. And the new baby as well. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carried.
Okay. Category is new business items, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items nine point zero-two through nine point zero-nine, correction, nine point ten.
All right, any discussion on any of those items? The one donation was lumped together, yeah? Correct, there was one large lump sum donation, that was a bunch of little ones all put together, it's clear. All right, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Right, motion carried.
And last, under business office, I'd like to.
Nine point oh-nine and nine point ten have to be voted on individually.
Oh. All right, so we voted yes on two and.
Two, two.
Yeah?
All right.
We have to redo this?
So be it.
Do you second that, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to amend our vote from nine point oh-two to nine point oh-eight, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carried, nine point oh-nine, David.
Let's make a motion, we approve item nine point zero-nine. It's the proposed administrative budget for the Board of Cooperative Education Services, Bosie's.
All right, any discussion on the proposed budget for Bosie's? Okay, how do you vote, Kathy? Aye, Julie? Aye, Craig?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm sorry, Chris, Craig?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item nine point one-zero. Dealing with vacancies on the Bosie's board.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the election to the Board of Bosie's? All right, how say you, Kathy?
Aye.
Julie?
Chris?
Aye.
Craig?
All right.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried.
Business office, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items ten point zero-two and ten point zero-three, second.
Any discussion on the budget or the property tax report card? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Right, motion carried.
Good, all right. I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss the litigation of Human Rights Division case number one zero two zero four five four nine.
Any discussion on going into executive session? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carry, we're executive session, thank you.